Recording in progress. Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito Roberto G. Swan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizú, Honorable George S. Go King, Honorable Jose P.P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern E. Esparcia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes Esgañi, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Q. Nakaya Unlim, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-Official Members: Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Liga de Mago Barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Elsénong, City Escape Federation President. There is Korom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Korom is here by certifying. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Our visitors were here today. Councilors, good afternoon. Good afternoon... Lagi. Tepa. Kadali. Kadali sa denak. Of course, those who are watching us right now, fellow Cagayanans, mayhapon sa tanan. I would like also to thank those who condo with, condo us, sent their condolences to us in our times of grief, when my nephew passed away. Thank you very much for the flowers, for the messages, the texts, and for visiting the week. Daghanke salamat. And thank you very much in behalf of the Rodriguez family. So, ah... Anako? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. So, I would like also to thank those who greeted me on my birthday, August 3. Thank you very much for sending your messages again. Thank you. Hope to see you after the session, okay? Yes. You have the floor, honorable councillor Edgar, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bebop Rodriguez. And in behalf of the majority of the City Council, we are extending wholeheartedly our greetings of happy birthday to our Vice Mayor. We will not ask you how young are you because that's not necessary anymore. And of course, our profound condolences to the Rodriguez family for the demise, untimely demise of nephew, the nephew of our Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader.
I was not able to be there to visit because I was somewhere else.
Yeah.
Now, good afternoon to the members of the City Council, Vice Mayor Bebop, members of the media, visitors, guests that we have here, present members of our PNP, and to our dear Cagayanans who are watching us on their respective social platforms. Madam Chair, I would like to request a councillor... Maria Lourdes Esgañi to lead the singing of Happy Birthday first.
Ohhh... Nakabalos da? Nakabalos?
Mayhapon ka na't ang tanan. Mayor asks everybody to please stand. Ayok, Vice Mayor, nika mo galing.
Dunhaan ta tanan ha? Dunhaan. And also the people in the gallery would like to request to sing with us.
Yes. Okay. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. 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 Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. 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 Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. 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 Please rise.
Let's put ourselves in the Holy Presence of God, in the name of the Father, of the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen. Thank you, Lord, for another day. Salamat ginaw kama tanan nagkatapok na pagkarong apuna para isgutan ang mga nakadayiang, mga hinisgutanan para sa takbayan sa Cagayan di Oro. Lord, continue to bless each one of us. Kami mga opisyalis nagibutaran sa katawan. Please, Lord, continue to bless as kami nasa mayang panglawas o kami makasinabot o kami makayusa para sa takbayan sa Cagayan di Oro. Lord, bless all the people of Cagayan di Oro. Now celebrating Igali Festival for the entire month of August. Please, Lord, continue, to bless us, ubantayan ang Kalinaw. This we ask to Christ our Lord. Amen.
Mga kababayan ang pampansang awit ng Pilipinas. Kayang magiliw, kadas ang sinatanan. Halam ng puso sa nitipoy buhay. Lupang hinihingan, uyan na ang mahiting. Sa manlulupin, ikapasi sinil. Sa nagatap, tutok sa simboyan, sa labi kong pangal. Ayun na kang tula ka, wala sa pagkayang ni damahal. Ang isda't ang kuwa kawan, may tatu, may tana't iningin. Ang ituwi na talo nga kayda, ang hayna batitinin. Lupang napalo ng war, at ito ang simka. Uy na ang ito sa pirito. Ang ibigay na parayong nabi, ang mamatay nam, na hilso. Have the monkey on your heart, have the love and city. Thy mountains, rivers, glaces, thy people, contented, happy. Have the monkey on your heart, have the love and city. The sea, the glaces, the waters, forever, to the end to live. The great way to the land of promise, bring it along the fardest sea. It's the mission of the cross to serve it forever freely. The broken, the ill-visioned life, the holy world of the angels. At the real source of the heart, every flesh for you and thy heart. The beautiful, the graceful, have the love and city. The holy, the mighty, the holy, the mighty, the mighty, the mighty. The beautiful, the graceful, have the love and city. To forever and forever, Lord, thy love in thy loving me.
Please be seated. Mr. Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Joselyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer. For the First District Councilors: Honorable Agapito Roberto G. Swan, Honorable Roger G. Abadai, Honorable J.R. Pasqual, Honorable Aimé Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo V. Calizú, Honorable George S. Go King, Honorable Jose P.P.S. Abu Junior, Honorable Malvern E. Esparcia. For the Second District Councilors: Honorable Ivona Yasin B. Imano, Honorable Maria Lourdes Esgañi, Honorable Jolene Mercedes El Balaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Q. Nakaya Unlim, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-Official Members: Honorable Yan Lam Es Lim, Liga de Mago Barangay President, and Honorable John Michael Elsénong, City Escape Federation President. There is Korom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Korom is here by certifying. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Our visitors were here today. Councilors, good afternoon. Good aften... Lagi. Tepa. Kadali. Kadali sa denak. Of course, those who are watching us right now, fellow Cagayanans, mayhapon sa tanan. I would like also to thank those who condo with, condo us, sent their condolences to us in our times of grief, when my nephew passed away. Thank you very much for the flowers, for the messages, the texts, and for visiting the week. Daghanke salamat. And thank you very much in behalf of the Rodriguez family. So, ah... Anako? Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. So, I would like also to thank those who greeted me on my birthday, August 3. Thank you very much for sending your messages again. Thank you. Hope to see you after the session, okay? Yes. You have the floor, honorable councillor Edgar, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bebop Rodriguez. And in behalf of the majority of the City Council, we are extending wholeheartedly our greetings of happy birthday to our Vice Mayor. We will not ask you how young are you because that's not necessary anymore. And of course, our profound condolences to the Rodriguez family for the demise, untimely demise of nephew, the nephew of our Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader.
I was not able to be there, to visit because I was somewhere else.
Yeah.
Now, good afternoon to the members of the City Council, Vice Mayor Bebop, members of the media, visitors, guests that we have here, present members of our PNP, and to our dear Cagayanans who are watching us on their respective social platforms. Madam Chair, I would like to request a councillor... Si Carani. Maria Lourdes Esgañi to lead the singing of Happy Birthday first.
Ohhh...
Siya kayo siya. Nakabalos da? Nakabalos? Oh, pare.
Mayhapon ka na't ang tanan. Mayor asks everybody to please stand. Ayok, Vice Mayor, nika mo galing. Dunhaan ta tanan ha?
Dunhaan. And also the people in the gallery would like to request to sing with us.
Yes. Okay. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Faster. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, Vice Mayor Bebop Rodriguez, from all of us. Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader.
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous session of this City Council and to consider the furnishing thereof as reading itself.
Any second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby approved.
Likewise moved for the approval of the said minutes.
Any second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried.
In this session, Madam Chair, three members of the City Council has signified their intention to deliver special report. Yes, we will do that later on. One, the first one would be councillor Ivona Yasin B. Imano regarding the review of internal security plan of the city. Second would be councillor Roger Abadai who will be talking about stray dogs in Rio di Oro Boulevard. And the third would be councillor Bernie Esparcia. Bugu flooding. But before we proceed, Madam Chair, we would like to recognize we have special visitors this afternoon. We have the candidates of the Queen CDO 2023. Number two, we have also the Cagayan di Oro candidate for Little Miss Mindanao 2023. First, we would like to request Barbie... Barbie Neri, who is the coordinator of the Queen CDO 2023, to introduce the delegates of this Miss Queen CDO 2023.
To the 20th City Council, to all the visitors, guests, media, and to the people of Cagayan di Oro, good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to present...
Ah, okay, okay.
Move to suspend the rules. Sorry.
Any second? Objection? I hear none motion is hereby carried. Proceed.
Thank you for allowing us to present the 20 official candidates of Queen of CDO 2023. Now, let me give you a quick background about Queen of CDO. This is actually a pageant for the LGBT community on its second year. Now, why Queen of CDO? Queen of CDO is only the pageant that will amplify the voices of the LGBT and magnify the faces of our LGBT community here in Cagayan di Oro. What's special about this is that this is an effort of all the LGBT leaders of Cagayan di Oro City. And I hope that one day we will be able to institutionalize Queen of CDO because the vision is to create a powerhouse of beauty here in Cagayan di Oro, not only limited to cisgendered men and women, but also for our fellow LGBT community. Let me introduce to you again the 20 official candidates of Queen of Cagayan di Oro 2023.
Hi, good day everyone. Mykilim Robin from Barangay Lapasan.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Clon Cortez, Barangay Bonbon. Pakpak mo.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jajigimalan and I come to represent Barangay Bugu.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Chan, bringing the pride of Barangay Guza.
Our Cigan, Barangay Makasandig.
Bella Dopandi, Barangay Ipunan.
CJ Kiada Denzo, Experience Beauty and Fun, Experience Barangay Kamamanhan.
Please be, everyone. My name is Emma Almiranti Toyor, Barangay 17.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Denise Kevson, proudly representing the most child-friendly Barangay in Cagayan di Oro City. Sidlak, Barangay Pagatpat. Good afternoon.
Once again, I art John Dallas Ranis, 20 years old, representing the proud soldiers of Barangay Patang.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Trixila Victoria and I representing Barangay Kanituan. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Justine Pareiso. I am bringing the name of Barangay Kauswaga.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Grover Goldaki Ver from the heart of hinterland Barangay of Cagayan di Oro City, Lumbya.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Miles Roa Babia Hagapi, 27 years old. And I am proud to represent Barangay Indahag.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Glenn Crumple. Proud and dignified to represent Barangay, 27.
A pleasant afternoon, everyone. My name is Kendall Lansadera Sungkipal Kailing, all the way from the heart of the city, Barangay 35.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Clarence Hu Otero, all the way from Barangay Nazaret.
Maayong hapon ka na't ang tanan. I am Kirk Vertidos Popyolek, representing the Barangay celebrating the Layag Festival and the home of our City Councillor, Ian Rosico Atchas, Barangay Puerto.
Madam... Madam Chair, we will also recognize the Miss Little Philippines Cagayan di Oro candidate, Michaela Chanel O. Castro. From the Lumbya, from Lumbya.
Mabuhay, my name is Michaela Chanel O. Castro. Throughout Vice Mayor, City Councilors, media guests of session... Oh, sorry. On behalf of Mr. Randy Pizalcedo, CEO and Head of Little Miss Mindanao Beauty Pageant 2023 on August 31... Oh, sorry. On August 19, 2023, 1:00 PM at Limket Kai Malrotanda 2023. Thank you.
So, can we have photos? You can... Relive. Program ay magutus ya? Sige, makita.
Ilang diya sa kataba.
Okay. Let's go, let's go. Mga guapo, guapo mga kunsiyalis.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, smile. Okay, thank you, thank you again. Ah, hi, Anela. Aniga. Barbie? Okay ra, okay ra sa ubos.
Manik pa dyan.
Okay. Oh, kuya, uwi. Okay, uh, let's resume.
Uh. Move to lift this order of suspension.
Okay, session resume. Like to acknowledge the President Consular Suset Daba. Okay, the first speaker for today.
Madam Chair, may I request that Consular Ivona Imanu Yasini Imanu be recognized for her special report.
Consular Evie Imanu, you are recognized.
Hi, good afternoon, thank you, Madam Chair, to the members of the 20th City Council, good afternoon to those who are watching us on social media and listening to us on the different platforms on the radio. Good afternoon to each and everyone, belated happy birthday, Vice Mayor.
Thank you again.
And to Sir Bernie as well. I will try to make my report as short and as concise as possible and I do have a little presentation. Dito lang, dito lang, sige. Last August 1, we all celebrated the opening or the grand launching of our Higalaay Festival. Everyone was, uh, for the first time, we used the Rio de Oro Boulevard. And it was, it was happy, it was one of a kind, it was a very special moment, not just for us in government, but also in Cagayan de Oro City. And I would like to say and extend our gratitude and our congratulations to our local chief executive who spearheaded now the opening of our festivities for our Cagayan de Oro City Festival, I mean Fiesta. And however, during the celebration or while the celebration was happening, there were also other events in the city that happened and transpired as well. First off, uh, in Upper Puerto, uh, there was a crime that was committed na ay gipusil sa Upper Puerto during the time that we were having our launching. Second, a few hours after the launching, there, uh, after the rave party, I was shocked to have read from a media source specifically from Bomboradio Cagayan de Oro. Can I have the next slide, please? Now, there were two. Duha Kabatanon, the second one, the other one. Na ay Duha Kabatanon, the other one there, nga, they joined the Higalaay rave party. And in the early mornings of August 2, kaniin Duha Kabatanon, as stated there in the article of Bomboradio, ah, gihunungan sila sa tulok katao nga nagmotor, ugia temt sila uglabay sa maongar Rio Boulevard. Now, the next one happened on August 2 at 10:00 in the morning, where, as you can see and as we have all known, or we were, how could we say? They were daring armed robbery, heavily, heavily armed, brandishing their long firearms as well as their caliber 40, as if there was no one to fear as well as to cause grave fear to our people. And as you can see by location, this happened in the very heart of Cogon, where there are a lot of people, now a lot of kids, a lot of parents are around. Now, to my colleagues of the 20th City Council, we with the mayor or the local chief executive as well as with the tourism, we have prepared a month-long celebration of the festival. Now, I have three big questions for us. Number one, are we, are we, all of us, our families, our children, our nieces, our nephews, atong lolo, atong lola, our guests from neighboring municipalities or tourists who would come here nga mo support sa ato during the time of the festival? Are we all safe to go, join, support even our local, our local initiatives for the said festivity? Are we still safe? Because personally, yesterday nakita na ko sa paglabay na kudya sa Kyatkay, nitindog na ang maongak atong Rosemary peria, tong periyahan. And four of my, four of my nephews, happy kay sila nga gusto sila mo adto. As much as I want them to create memories, I am also scared for them as well nga sima ko na'y mahitabo and toward incidents, diba? So I think this is something that we have to see and to get answers from. Number two, kaya pa ba sa tong local enforcement agencies nga mauphold ang atong safety sa adlaw-adlaw in the next few days, in the next few weeks nga natai festivities? And maybe even beyond the time of the festival? And number three, maybe I can just ask, what happened to our intelligence committee as Consular Kaliso cited and said during the interview after the said incident? nga, dili enough, ang mere police visibility. I think he was referring to the preemptive activity such as intellect, uh, intelligence gathering for preventive measures of crimes and criminalities in our city. Now, our city is the city of golden friendship. Is once again, now because of this event, is once again tainted. During the sauna of President Bongo Marcos, I was given the privilege to be present during his sauna. And as the CSFI or the congressional spouse of my brother Congressman Bambi, we were able to talk to a few friends. Amo silang aghat, giinvite sa tong festival, because we are aware nga we have a month-long festival. Now, we have our whitewater rafting, we have our produce, we have wonderful products in the city that we can show to people in Luzon and in Visayas. But because of the headline, keni abot mani siya sa GMA News National as well as Rappler, we had a few calls from a few of our friends nga atong aghat nga mo anhe. And they were asking if ipadayon pa ba daw namo ang among invitation sa ila sa panahon sa kapistahan sa dakbayan sa Cagayan de Oro. And last Thursday, I was given the chance to talk to my brother. And then he told me, siya may mong plano, ato bang padayunon? And with a heavy heart, might I say, I told him nga, maniid na lang sa ta. Ato sang bansay-bansayon ang panahon, ato sang lantaon ang panahon. Kaya ako, for their safety as well, because they already have the notion, if you're in Mindanao, goboto Mindanao. And I want to take away that notion, so that, you know, people from the north and from Visayas, mo anhin na unta ug Mindanao. So ano ko, ato na sang lantaon. Now, to my colleagues of this August body, I think it is safe to say that intelligence work, no, the intelligence community can only be effective if we provide them with enough resources to combat crimes before they happen. Siguro you will ask, nano maka dare ko ingon or why do I have the authority or maybe the decency to even bring this up as a very, a very grave concern? I would like to say, na siguro ko'y gamay, gamay nga kahibalubahin ani sa akong pag-uban-uban kang Congressman Bambi when he was the executive, uh, local executive of Misamis Oriental. But more so, I have panako nasabtan ang gipasabot sa mong amahan nga si kaniin Mayor Dongkoy, why gapaningkamo siya nga mauphold ang peace and order sa atong dakbayan? Ganig ang gaan pa ganit siya ug the peacemaker. Now, why do I state this? Because the concern stems from the very advocacy that they have fought for for the longest of time. And us as representatives, you know, the entire city council, the entire people that we call the government in the city, no, and maybe as well as, I would, maybe, maybe lang, correct me if I may be wrong, maybe we have not fulfilled our moral obligation as keeper of the purse. Basin diliigo ang atong giappropriate nga funds, atong peace and order funds, no, so as to prevent such crimes from happening sa panahon pag yod nga nag-open ta sa atong Higalaay Festival. Now, the event, the recent event has clearly reminded us of our mandate as state, as stated in the RA 7160 or in section 16 of the general welfare, welfare clause of the Eld Local Government Code. Now, we need to uphold the peace and order of our city. Ang katiling, ang katiling banong kaakuhan ato isip mga pinili ug sinaligan sa katauhaning atong dakbayan nga ni, we call it public office. We hold public office because the public trusted us. And public office is public trust. And dili na to sayangon ang ilang pagsalig sa ato, nga ganis sila may nagbutang sa ato dinhi. Now, my prayer, Madam Chair, I have three actually. One, let us assure the public, the entire city of Cagayan de Oro that we are working on their general welfare as well as their public safety. Second, public officials, us, all of us, are still in control of our public peace and order, our general peace and order. And lastly, we call on our local chief executive. Yes, he is working hard, that may be to possibly initiate in the review of our internal security plan together with various law enforcement agencies or the Peace and Order Council of our city. Now, as I close, Madam Chair, I believe it is something that all of us in these four walls would understand and we hold dear, as we took oath last year, that our people's general safety is of utmost priority, that they may sleep in the evening in the comforts of their homes knowing that the very individuals that they have put into office, that they have trusted, are not sleeping around on their worries, on their concerns, and that we are not sleeping around on our responsibilities. So once again, Madam Chair, thank you very much and good afternoon.
Thank you very much, Consular Evie Imanu, yes, any, any comment? Any comment, uh, Consular? Consular Romeo Kaliso, you are recognized?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good afternoon to you, to my colleagues of the 20th City Council, our guests, and all those who are viewing our session via this social media platform. That was a very good report, Madam Chair. And, uh, well, maybe, uh, I agree, we've got to review our existing internal security plan as the good reporter has said. Actually, we have just approved, that was last month, if I am not mistaken, our PUPS plan or our Public Order and Public Safety Plan. But the practice that we've been doing, I think not only in Cagayan de Oro, but almost in all LGOs, is that for every event, for every activity, there should be a security plan. Just like, uh, what had happened during the launching of the Higalaay Festival, there was a plan, but it was rather hasty, Madam Chair. Because, uh, even myself, I got the invitation to attend said activity within a short notice. But a short notice should not be a reason why we cannot plan appropriately, even in a hasty mode, Madam Chair. And so, uh, lay rabatadiri sa Cagayan, kaya, still, if we compare Cagayan de Oro's peace and order situation to other highly organized cities, we can say that still, we've got the lowest number of, uh, crime-related incidents, Madam Chair. But lay uta dinhi kaya, naanad man tanga, wala kaayu target, target sa mga threats, especially the threats of terrorism, the threat of lawless violence, and the threat of hard crimes, Madam Chair. Pu sa gani nga na'y may tabo dinis sa ato, panggita, reaktadayon. And that's why, uh, really, uh, this is challenge for all of us. The executives should know how to plan. The executives should know how to get ready for the security of not only our constituents, not only our people, but also our visitors. So that, uh, we cannot hear manifestations, just like what has been manifested by the good reporter nga, dili na lang kuno niya, padayunon to 'yang mga bisita, kaya aduk naman. Uh, I think, uh, the better manifestation is that we've got to sell Cagayan de Oro, but we've got to work together so that it will be safe, not only for our people, but also for our visitors to go. Para sa ni Higalaay Festival, who will come here and visit us to view our activities? If we discourage our own visitors to come here, Madam Chair? What we should do is to really come up with an appropriate plan. In fact, this morning, when we had a, a short briefing as regards the activity that I care, Committee on Civic Military Parade, Madam Chair. Naganagot pangutana, so may pagsecur ni ini, ang safety ni ini. Because until now, uh, I've been telling the co-chairman of the Committee on the Higalaay Festival, one of the co-chairmen, uh, Consular Jayrova Pasqual, nga, mag-designate tao kinsay over all security overs here for this Fiesta. Para, because it's different from the Council Committee on Public Order and Safety. I, I was not the one designated for the Security Committee on this activity, Madam Chair. So maybe we'd rather advise, uh, those who are managing the Higalaay Festival, that as early, we should already designate and organize the Committee on Security. Para naagui atong panggut, atong pangutanon ba ni ini, Madam Chair. So again, uh, if there's anything more in aid of legislation, we can still refer this before the Committee on Public Order and Safety, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Consular, uh, Consular Romeo Kaliso. Yes, Consular, uh, Consular Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor?
Uh, thank you very much, Madam Chair, just like to react to the special report of Evie. The Executive Department Mayor Cagayan de Oro has placed peace and order as the number one agenda of his administration. In fact, we need. In fact, we need, uh, immediately after the talk of oath as mayor of the city, the first thing he did was to buy cars, uh, these cars for the, for all the police stations Cagayan de Oro. It was never done before, that the priority, the first three months of the administration was focused on providing the police. Kada uso sa ilang station with samang sakina. Ikado ah. Uh, for the first time in the city, in the history of the city, talking about peace and order, only in this administration of Mayor Clarixoi, that the Cagayan de Oro Task Force, Oro, uh, Task Force Oro, composed of army soldiers, was organized, and now they are deployed. Now, crimes is not in the city, is not a common occurrence. The, as, in fact, Madam Chair, there is no breakdown of law and order in the city that everybody should be afraid. I think the police are still in control. Other big cities in the, in the Philippines, from Davao to Manila, they also have all these nefarious activities of criminals. Atong buta na onen hingas, kita ditas, dili kita sapian nga nasu, bisagani ang sapian nga nasu. Na maka kaon, ang tanan tao, na aga po'y da kung krimi, ya ke hitapu. Lapo dito di tingali dinis ato nga, lebin na kaduol ang pista. Now, so, let us have faith in ourselves. Let us believe in ourselves. As members of City Council, as public officials, people look at us and they will listen to every word that we say. So, let us start looking back, analyzing everything that we will be telling our people. Para nga, nga dili mediskan isuwan. In fact, we should remember, nga ang tanan ng mga economic activities in the cities depends on peace and order. So, if we as members of City Council, as the officials of the city, will say, "Cagayan de Oro is not safe," my God, that would be disastrous to us. So, we have to, we have to be, we have to tell ourselves that we're just, we're not just ordinary members of the city, of the, of the, of society now. We have responsibilities to do, we have obligations to do to our people. So, lama'y, lama'y, natural man na ang usahal, lebin na bago na ang bako pa ang kininga police, uh, Cibo Police, gabonyagan sa mga criminal, patitasin may nga, kanamupadayon. Every administration, I've been, in, how many administrations, five mayors before, kada gina, naipuglima sa peace and order. But it did not involve the city into chaos, because these are isolated cases for me. Dili nisa 'yung common occurrence every day, matanan nagita man tago. So, nga to is, we should go out and tell the people, show the, show the people that we are not afraid. That is what they did in Paris, when there was, when there was a terrorist attack and so many people died. The Prime Minister of all the neighboring countries went to the streets and marched and say that we are not afraid, that we are in control. That's what the people need. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Attorney Edgar Cabalas. Yes, councillor, let us limit our comments, okay? Uh, kay napamaila inya mo another two. So, councillor Roger Abadai, you're recognized?
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer, my colleagues in the 20th City Council and all people who are listening us today, especially the police, the PNP. And that is a very good report. I hope the police are also listening, and that is, that will be their challenge, but it does not mean that there was some miscarriage of handling peace and order in the city of Cagayan de Oro. Normal lang, because if you look, if you read the old definition of the police, the police is a city, and the city is the police, meaning all of us are police. Sa una, wakapamaghi police, ang mga tao mo'y gati na baga. So, uh, the, even the most powerful, the most richest country, until now, they are experiencing violent crimes every day, if you read the news. Grabe ang pangitabu sa Pilipinas, grabe sa pangitabu sa uban nga, uh, Regio, in Cibo, lately, or in Metro Manila. Normal man na kay, crime is a social phenomenon. Una ang mga klaseklasing tao na, sa tanan ng mga nadiaget ang kagubot. It's like birth and death, ha? Naime tao, naasa'y mamatay. So, muna nga, kinanglan, uh, all of us must be vigilant, because the safety of life and property, we do not rest solely to the police or to the government. It's also our obligation to protect ourselves. For example, katong, gitulisan, gold, goldsmith, but'to no gold? Dapat, this is a reminder to us to review our ordinance, the CCTV ordinance, and the hiring of security. Kung dun na pasile CCTV, dasile security, that should not happen. For a problem, kay, dunay security, di sa siguro kaboto ang, uglab na bay armas, kay, preventive, di ba? So, there's something to review on this incident. The police planning, there are classification of police planning, of program, preventive, reactive, and contingency plan. Naime palpak ganis sa osan ya, then that should be reviewed by our police department. And the new police, normal, basa na ebagog ganitya chain of command, like what happens atong chains of PNP, dagan ding kriminay tabo, ganuman, there were reorganize, reorganize, so katong naghandle sa mga position, very lost, nawala ang kontrol ba. So, I think that is one of the factor, nga medyo na relax ang uban atong police, can reassign, so wala na siyang kontak, no? Again, another one is, uh, kining atong, uh, kano, uh, kining atong kaimtang, karoon, uh, dili man, dili sabga, one, dili sabka secured, lama man, we are still safe, no? We are still safe. So, we would just like to, kano, the incident, we'd just like to remind, I know the chairman of peace and order has already met, this policeman, and they are now understudying our peace and order situation with the help of other law enforcement agencies. I think we will expect that our festa celebration is peaceful. So, all of us will just cooperate, cooperate. So, I am inviting also that all of us will also review our ordinance, the CCTV and kining requiring establishment to hire their security guard. Para sa ilag, dili kay, magsalig lang sila sa police, nae, usa kain siya din nga, sigilag tulisan, sigilag, hold up, hold up. Ganuman, they are not hiring a security guard, and no CCTV, and that is in our ordinance. So, this incident, that those incident happen, it would be our reminder also to us, legislator and to the police in the city.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much, councillor Roger Abadai, councillor Attorney Jujut, and councillor Jay Pasqual, yes. Shorten?
Salamat sa mondano ng report kang Concejal Ibi Imano. Anga ko lang kay sakto ang gingon ni Majority Floor Leader, Consel Cabalas, og ni Concejal Caliso, Concejal Abadai, nga, dili makin malikayan ang krimen. Apan ang tinutugn ka trabaho, makita ni mo ang tinutugn ka tag, kung ang epektibo makin atong kapulisan, kung ilang matumbok, og ilang masikop ang naghimo sa krimen. Kana lang, ang pinakaimportante.
Okay, thank you. That was the shortest, I love it.
Wapagari ko na humal, to, to humal na lang. Na humal, madam, si, imo na mokong gitil, pero okay. Niga, mangka. Dili napamagoy, sumpay na lang.
Si sumpay na, di ba?
Gabay na, pero mubu, okay. Madam Chair, Kabala, Madam Chair, I won't take up much of time. Anga ko lang, Madam Chair kay, dagan mga krimen nga, wala pa nasulban, antod karoon. Gawas lang siguro sa katong kaso ni Doctor Andutan, nga nasi, na ilan ang nag, napasaka ano kaso, pero uban, wala pa yod. So, nga ko lang hangyo, ang tinutugn haagit sa atong kapulisan, paliw ko, ipakita ni niyo gilas nga, masulban ninyo ang atong problema din ni ang krimen, inyong matumbok og inyong masikop ang naghimo sa kani nga kaso, o incidente sa mega gold.
Okay, thank you very much. Another short, ano, councillor Jay Pasqual, you're acknowledged?
Mayang hapon sa tanan, mayang hapon, Madam Chair. Anga ko lang is, I have been to almost five events, major and parallel activities sa core, and all I can say is, dagan na ato ang mga police na didto, and of course, dagan poda ang ato ang mga, mga force multipliers like atong mga Coast Guard, Bureau of Fire, and of course, um, nagstorya namin ni councillor Caliso ganina na dapat i-exhaust yon nato, kung pwede ganitya, atong BGMP, maapil pa nato, no? Ngatumahangyo, and napatay Navy, naapay dagan kaayaw, Madam Chair. And also, maybe we can also call on our barangay captains. Kay sa barangay, naa mangidnay ka ng atong force multiplier nga mga barangay tanod nga, to help, no? Kay, lisod kaayaw nga madaut ang ato ang festival, or ato ang kabibuhan dinis sa dakbayan. Kaloy sa ginoo, ako, mangidko na hadlok, uh, ka na.
Isok, magyog ka.
Uh, sa kadagan na kung event niya yadto, of course, makita, yun na ko, nga dagan pod ka atong mga kapulisan, og atong task force oro. So, kana lang, Madam Chair, nagpasalamat lang ko, and of course, as General Caliso said na, maybe it was an isolated case, so, di malikayan, ka dagan maginom, na idnay magsinumbaga, or what? So, kana lang, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Jay Pasqual. My own point of view, I do not, yes, there will be shortcomings along the way, no, sa atong kapulisan, but I still believe that Cagayan de Oro is a peaceful city. I, every day when I am interviewed, I always say, "You come visit Cagayan. It is a peaceful city. I want to boost the economy. I want more food in the table." Each time, na inauguration mo, anto ko, and I thank the owner for giving food to our employees, for giving additional jobs, no? This is an isolated cases. I am part of the, I'm the vice chair of the Peace and Security Council. Kada meeting namo, there are plans for that. Ang naitabo lang, nga na sunod-sunod ang naitabo. Then, of course, we have to look into that matter, but with this kind of situation, it's not really that we think is very worse, ang atong dakbayan. Continue to invite your friends, continue to invite that Cagayan de Oro is a peaceful city. Let's have, let's help boost the economy, more employees, more food in the table. Muna ako, even Miss Or, I said, I will always say, Miss Or's a peaceful city, and I know that it is a peaceful city, right? Uh, councillor Romeo Caliso, we've been doing that, we didn't, we have these meetings, Peace and Security Council. And siguro isolated cases, siguro enhance what is lacking and probably discuss with the new, with the new PNP chief, Colonel Radem, right? Because the Oro Task Force is already in place. Are they in place already? Are they deployed? They are. So, there's no reason, okay? So, thank you very much. The next who will run the previous speech is councillor?
Councillor Abadai.
Councillor Abadai, you are recognized in the Bernie?
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you very much, Majority Floor. Thank you guys, give, scambais, meri giga?
Udiliwe, taiwan na.
Nam basa, ching chow, chow?
Councillor Edgar na.
Councillor Cabalas, thank you very much. Uh, to all the members of the 20th City Council and all people who are listening to us and watching us virtually, mayang hapon sa tanan. The first place I would like to ask, naka-walk, og jog na mo dya sa atong boulevard, the new spirit? Lapa? Very good. This is my report, yam.
Naka-walk na ka.
For those who have, for those who have not yet, please, please, I'll invite you tomorrow.
Nakaanton na bagal lagi?
Yes, yes, that's why I am having this report, because of my experience, observation. Uh, this is the product of my experience and observation while walking and jogging dya sa atong Rio de Oro Boulevard. Final na bagineng angalan eh? Wala pa ba? I have no, I would not yet, but, okay, anyway.
Ano pa, ano pa.
Uh, kining atong boulevard, oh, the Rio de Oro Boulevard, uh, it holds a very significant, significant importance sa atong ciudad, uh, major showcase for tourists and central hub for physical fitness and recreation. Ana, ganin mo dya buntag? Lebin na sato di Sunday, na dia magsumba, na dia mga religious group, napo dia mag prenaps, prenaps, papit, picture, na tanan, every recreation na dia, gat, kano? Then, so, center hub for physical fitness and recreation, oh. Um, busa, the city also has to keep that boulevard, uh, secure, safety, clean, and harmonious for the individuals within using that boulevard. Now, kung manam dya, tanam kita yun na, tanan, na mga walkers, joggers, gadalas ilang domesticated animals, kining pets, no, lebin na mga dogs, oh, in ini, bred breeding, gagikan sagat may, pengos sa taku. Napo dia mga dogs, or uban pa dia, nga mga animals, yeah, suri-suri dia sa atong boulevard, ok lang, ok lang, kanang mulai specific owner, pero kanang gadalas dia. Or aga, I don't know, kung ilabran ka tuyoon, dia ra nila idispo sa mga pupo, pipi sa ilang mga, ilang, what, didang, pieces of their, uh, uban pa ganitya, nae go ban nila nga mga hybrid, dua tulog, sa katawa ga, mag-jog, uh, uban nun ya, mga hybrid rabana, unlist muli ikot. Dagan magtabo-tabo dia, ikaw kung basi makusurda ni mong dagway, dili kadu, di ba? So, muna, uso sa inyo makita dia sa atong boulevard, sa buntag, or hapon, na dia klaseklasing nga, kano? One time, one morning, I walk zero, from, what is, jatis, five kilometers, five kilometers, bak, bak to bak, eh, pag sakay ko sa balik human, pag sakay ko sa kesakenan. Tingal ko beris, bilis, ako ng kesakenan. Ang nao ko, pag tanok ko, naa maine pilit dito deng mga pupo, natunok maniko sa kwan, and mine, I thought dito lang sa.
Winas to kwarta mento.
So, next morning, ako nagigi, tanaw gini, next morning, baliko, tanaw ko yun, wala may mga protective, ang mga ero dia, kanang gepandalon dia, mulay mga pitchet or pad, kanang matiras batu, container waste, and kanang para mo ihi, umokadil, ikin ma buta kong tadiya, kay, lain na bening matunok ka sa, kanang pupo hugaw sa, kay, mas may pa matunok ka sa sub, objek, imo makuha, mal, kung matunok ka, kyang-kyang, kagyo, di, papahit pa, munang smili, maka, beri yang sanitary, try, try to go there, be, be careful, be careful, pag na tanaw gika sa ground, kay, basi matunok ka sa hugaw, hugaw. What I mean is, maka ulo sa atong mga bisita, ok lang, Cagayan de Oro, kay, hugaw ba ni ang boulevard, nga moro ba ni, su dun karoon, oh. So, nanaman ta existing ordinance, ordinance, uh, providing for the rules and regulations for the control and welfare of animals, and providing penalty for the violation. So, I, I'm inviting the law enforcement, sabay may impostan eh, ang magimpostan eh, siguro kanang mga barangay, uh, neighboring barangays na dia, or the police, the city health, and barangay officials, so, will be the one to impose, wala man nagimpostan eh. I, I don't know, kung mga barangays, karoon na, abas lay ordinance, eh, kining, uh, kining mga istri, andis tri animals. So, Madam Chair, uh, I am referring this report to the Committee on Health and Committee on, uh, the concerned committee, uh, the, uh?
Liga ng barangay.
Oh, ABC. So that we will be able to address this, uh, recurring problem now in our boulevard. Atong, kung atong boulevard kay, morning center of Quagaron, uh, anaan sa mga atong turista, no? So, that is my report, Madam Chair. So, that is my report, uh, madam chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So, refer to the uh, uh, okay, Councillor Gurley, Balaba, you are recognized.
Hello, good afternoon, madam chair. Happy birthday and.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, uh, if I'm not mistaken, I think the R C B has already issued a guidelines that prohibit um, uh, the uh, your pets, no? The inside the Ri, uh, Rio de Boulevard? Rio, Rio di Oro Boulevard. There's already a uh, uh, prohibition. Even uh, the carrying of um, plastic, um, uh, water, but, uh, mineral water, plastic. Hindi pwedeng nasasulod dia sa um, Rio de Boulevard. Um, ano, I have to admit that I am a.
Dog lover.
Dog lover, yes.
I know.
I have thirteen dogs.
Yes.
And uh, um, it, it's really disappointing, no? I wish I could bring my pets there, no? To in walking and exercise, but it's really disappointing because um, how, uh, there, there's, um, the people, no? Have been given a fair warning from the R C B and from the executive branch na whenever their pets po, they have to pick it up, no? We have to be responsible pet owners. So, uh, morning naitabu, gibawalan na hinoon, kay daghang yud sa tuang, wala po nagafalo sa maong mando. So, bawal ang mga pets, diha sa, as far as, ano, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Uh, Councillor Jay Pascal, muna.
Madam Chair, mayang hapon, na ay kuwan ani, dinisas City Information Office, dated um, July thirty-one. Mga pets ug bottled water ginadili na pasulod sa Rio de Oro Boulevard. Gipahibalok karoon sa Technical Working Group sa Rio de Oro Boulevard nga dili, gididan na ang mga pet owners nga magdala sa ilang mga binuhing ero, iring, uguban pang mga pets sulod sa boulevard sugod karoon at laowah, hulyut thirty-one. Lakip sa ginadili, maohang pagpadala ug bottled water, kay bisan asar, rakin ilabay, ugibilin sa mga nagdala. Hinungdan nga magkalat ang basura sulod sa boulevard. And uh, gikuani ni Attorney Jose Edgar Doy. Thank you.
Okay, uh, uh, last, uh, the two last will be Councillor Bernie and Councillor Roger.
Thank you, madam chair. Uh, madam chair, just, uh, to add and to support also the comment of Gurley Balaba, madam chair. Actually, I saw that, that post about anang gibawalang yun. Uh, I wa, I thought nga katong abalaod is for the kuwan lang, katong lan launching. Pero ako nakita mora gusto nagidin nila ipagbawal yun ang plastic o pati ang ero. Ang ako lang comment ni Mr. Chair, tanadili pa na final. Because in fairness, naman saggy mga gadalaw mga pets nga ginapadaya per nila ilang mga, mga ero. Ang mga malls manggaling ginaallow galing nila. And to be honest, kanibito atong boulevard, kay, number one ganahan ko, kay mga tao bisag, dilige exercise, mapugus na ugjaging, so guapo sa ilang health. Ikaduha, bisag nakay problema, pero tungod lang kay guapo kay boulevard, anang makawala, mayo sa mental health ang maong boulevard. Let's expect this nga masa, masa magitan man na dia. So, public maginazia. And regarding sad sa plastic, though I don't know lang kay katong last, sa katong launching na to, Mr. Chair. Wako nakita nga daghan kay basurahan. Mas, mas okay pa kuwan ang, mahalag ginagmay nga drum, pero daghan every other kanto, kay sa mayong kung nga na may basurahan, puo sa unahan, dako kayo. I think Mr. Chair, kung ako sad, kung nagbitbit ko, tapos napampukoy makita ang abutangan basurahan. I'm sure at least malesan siguro na to. Hopefully, the T W G dilipan na mag-final about it, madam chair. And hopefully, may storyahan sa committee hearing ani, madam chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bernie Sparsia. Last, Councillor Roger Abade.
Uh, po this afternoon lang, madam chair. I beg to disagree, no? I to hope the R C B, Tony Eagle, should also uh, visit the law, Article Republica, Kiti forty-five, the Animal Welfare Act. Uh, dilisab, ako, I am supak sagco nga dilisab maka, maka dala ugero o domesticated animal, oh. Pero as long as it will have to comply, da si proper pitchet or pad or any materials that contain their waste, oh, gani, ang sa ubang, na ubang ordinance sa magbutangan yud o busal, kana mouth kuwan ang mga ero, mois para mois troll, no? So, one, one way of caring nga healthy ang dog is to let them walk, walk, di ba? So, prohibiting them, that might also be uh, violation sa Animal Welfare Act. So, I hope that the R C B will also review their memorandum sa banayan ng isyod, yeah, kay, uh, to be fair also to the uh, dog handler or dog pit lover, so, so kana lang.
Thank you very much. As we all know, I mean, I've been, I've been to other countries, wala giko ni kuwan dito nga dilipasulod ng ero. Uh, they are pets, they're part of the family. Is a matter of political will nga implement yud ang atong ordinance sa. Like Gurley, she is a dog lover, and the rest here, Jay Pascal, and the rest of the councillors. And part na sa kinabuhay, sa usakapamilya, that they have their own pets to bring with them. Ang ako is that we cannot really prevent them from going inside, kito god malibang sila, I don't think so. Para nakuha, ako ng opinion. Because anywhere you go, it's a matter of discipline. Kung pananlit na ay mo bantay, dilige siya mo punit ano, then give the penalty. Kay kung atong pasagdan nga lakas lang kita sa atong balao, wala tay himoon. Ato na lang then iprevent the animal from entering, that we don't call them animal, part of our family, from entering in the same place. Dilibade ka na, uh, what for me, ah, dilima siguro makatarungan nun. Because some of these pets sleep with their, their kuwan, their families, no? Unyay mo na lang na, kay pinakasayon manggod is to refrain them from going there. Pero kung na ay astray dog, ipakuha sa, sa, what you call this, kanibitan tawag, city vet. Ako is political will, nga maprevent kining kakahitabu penalize. Muna ang ako, dililang siguro para naku, nga dilin na lang yun sila pasulon. Why should we deprive this family from bringing their dog, their, their, their pets nga makalipay mo na while they are walking, no? Ang ako lang is, what is, empower the ordinance. Thank you very much. The next reporter, Councillor Bernie Sparsia.
Daghan salamat, madam chair. Kanatun tanan, again, dagang mayang hapon, kanatun tanan sa mga nagtanaw karoon, sa atong uh, Facebook Live, sa mga namino sa Radjo, mayang hapon. Madam Chair, pagbalin ako sa Kagendio Oro, ako yud tagabalulang. Pero gi consider yun ako as second home ang barangay Bugo. Kay diya man ako nahimamat nakita ang akong pinakagwapang asawa. Og diya gyud, nandagko ang akong mga anak sa barangay Bugo. Now, madam chair, sa kaduke na mugpuyo sa barangay Bugo, diya na nandagko akong mga anak. Bi sa pagunsa kakusog sa ulan, sa unang mga panahon. Wala giko yun nakita diya ng grabe nga bahag ni, ni sukad kana among compound diya, wak gina sukad nga maabton sa grabe nga bahag. Pakikita paliyog sa. July, I think kundi ko sayo twenty or twenty-one, madam chair. I think that's a video. Nagbaha ang akong messenger, kay dililang dito dapit sa lugar sa akong mother-in-law. Kundi li halos tanan suna sa Bugo, napuno gayud sa bahag. Paki, pakiplido, anak. Tanawa. Grabe yud, first time nga grabe nga na ang bahag. Dito palang sa lugar sa akong mother-in-law, ang, ang tubig di na sa kanal mo agi, dito na mo agi mismo sa dalan. Og first time yud nga ang mga tubig nanulod na yud sa balay. Gani, pilion na na kuny mga pipila na adri, zone one, upper Bantilis Bugo. Napaisadri, uh, zone three, Bugo. Og labi na katong, katong labaan sa unang na muragsuki na mas grabe na yud ni samot. Madam Chair, pipila ang ilang mga komento. Allow me to read this, na uban nag-ingon nga ang creek near the area is too shallow and almost reaching the height of the dyke. There's a dyke project was unfinished. Tapos sa uban po, na inag-ingon drey, na ay mga dakong proyekto sa taas, sa may upper Puerto. Na ilang gidudahan, akong karoon allegedly mo'y ilang gidudahan, na tungod daw sa medyo dagan-dagan na mga projects karoon diya. Muna ang grabe nga ulan, murat ang mga tubig diya na nipadulong sa mga balay diya sa barangay Bugo. Kuntan aon ninyo grabe na. Tapos daghan yud diya halos, first time gayud sa kadugay sa panahon, na wala mabaha ikaroon ni bahag. Katong suki na sa bahag ni samot, ni sakan tubig. Mr. Chair, madam chair, sorry, uh, allegedly lang na sila'y mga gipang sultid. Ako nakabantay sagco nga na'y mga dakong project nga ginabuhat, medyo dito sa taas dapita. Og momo ng ilang gidudahan, madam chair. Ang ako lang, my prayer lang, madam chair, hopefully. Uh, since also I am the chairman sa atong race reduction. Og ako pong gyangyo dayon ang atong, wala man karoon atong chairman sa Public Works nga magka-joint committee hearing tanamito investigate. Again, guapo man na na'y mga project, pero basin lang bang naalantay na overlook, ogu na to mabantayan. Og basi, tanaw ang ginato i-review, kung ano naingani na ang barangay Bugo nga halos, dako yun na porcento sa ilahan na bahaan gayud. Og di lang basta-basta ba, na bahag, delikado gayud. Takabalurabatanga ang Bugo, medyo layo, layo bey yud sa ciudad. Wala pa bey, tanakatukod ka atong plano nga satellite. Sa atong C D R R M D diya sa may tablon, dri pa bey sa sintr, uh, medyo napa issue sa traffic. So, mga panahon nga kusog ang ulan, sila yud mabalaka perminte. So, again, madam chair, akong prayer tanan na medjoin committee hearing ani nga i-investigate ang maong dahilan, ngano naingani karoon ang Bugo, inkaso na'y kusog kayo nga ulan. Daghan salamat, madam chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Bernie Sparsia. Yes, Councillor, uh, Ayana Chas, you are recognized.
Mayang hapon, ma, madam chair, uh, to the members of this council. Uh, madam chair, I rejoin there from the report of Councillor Bernie Sparsia. Uh, kagahapon nakabisita ko sa Bantilis Bugo. Uh, kaniadto, sa panahon nga gaiskila ko sa Bugo, galabay ko na ay gamay nga bridge nga among gatabukan dinana, madam chair. Uh, almost mga tinfit kalahung. Karoon, pagbisita na ako, tagatuhot na lang, igon na lang ako lakangan. So, nakita na ako nga nanaiselstation ang drainage system sa Bantilis Bugo. So, kinanglan siguro, madam chair, nga punduhan na kini, nga maong, gitawag nato nga kanal, kay, dilin na niya ma-accommodate ang volume sa tubig nga kakahulog sa Bantilis. Nakita na to nga nanay farther na mga development, labina kay nagopening na ang Puerto Claveria Route, no? So, daghan ang development sa taas, kay naman tay mga alternate route, pero ang problema, madam chair, kay ang barangay Bugo is a catch basin barangay. Ang ilang mga kanal system, ang ilang riverbank system, na asa interior part yud mismo sa mga residence sa barangay Bugo. So, nakita na ko nga kinanglano na nitutukan sa atong city planning, na mahimuan na yud og other design, nga ma-improve og mapadako nato ang maong, ang mga drainage system ang ling Bantilis Bugo. So, kana lang, madam chair, nakita na ko nga, uh, mayo ang pag-deliver sa report ni, uh, Councillor Bernie Sparsia. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ayana Chas. So, refer to the Committee on Infrastructure and Climate Change. And make sure that if you also have with climate change, the mitigating factor is very important. Kita mga katauhan dapat pareho gyapon na sa climate change, so say ang ibuhaton to help the environment, okay? So, any more comment? No more? So, let us proceed. Majority floor leader, Attorney Councillor Edgar Kabalas.
Direct si, madam chair, direct si request of Councillor Ayana Chas for a special report.
You rejoin there.
Line, line.
Ah, lapa ka? Ayun sa ba? Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, there's another report. Okay, Councillor Ayana Chas, you are recognized.
Thank you, madam chair. A very short report, madam chair, no? So, honorable members of the 28th City Council, led by our honorable Vice Mayor Jocelyn Bebo Rodriguez. Friends and media and guests, good afternoon. This is special report related to the order of reinstatement of Honorable Marvin G. Bia and Honorable Tyler Sia for the dismissal issued by the Ombudsman. Let me give you a little background of this case. On January tenth, two thousand nineteen, the suspension order comes up by the Office of the Ombudsman directing the removal of Honorable Marvin G. Bia and Honorable Kagawad Tyler Sia. However, the respondent filed for a motion for reconsideration questioning the decision. On December twenty-one, twenty twenty, the suspension order of dismissal was reversed and set aside, and the complaint against the respondent, Honorable Bia and Kagawad Tyler, was dismissed. However, the order was repeatedly refused by the Honorable Rick C. Tinampay for a very long time. Now, here are the order of the Office, of the Ombudsman issued on July four, two thousand twenty-three, directing the reinstatement of Honorable Chairman Marvin Bia with the phrase immediately reinstatement. Now, therefore, madam chair, I am humbly ask this body with its discretion to implement immediately reinstatement of the petitioner as ordered by the Office of the Ombudsman. I would like also to refer this to the Department of Interior and Local Government. Let be noted, as they reminded by the Office of the Ombudsman, that the refusal or failure by any officer of to observe and, and implement the decision and out, and orders shall be ground for disciplinary action. This is a attribute that of the constitutional mandate of the Ombudsman to keenly observe in law and jurisprudence. Thank you and get best, madam chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Ayana Chas.
Uh, refer to the.
Refer to the?
D L G.
D L G?
Uh, okay. Barangay Affairs.
Okay, barangay affairs. Refer to barangay affairs and to the city, D L G, City D L G, office.
So, that's the end of this special report, portion of.
Okay, thank you very much.
We proceed to the business of the day. Item number one, proposed resolution twenty twenty-three four six one, returning to barangay council of barangay zero one D City. Shift ordinance number two, series twenty twenty-three, covering its supplemental budget number one for COY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of six hundred fifty-four thousand five hundred seventy pesos and seventy-three centavos. With information that the ordinance is operative in its entirety. Move for its approval. Ay, Councillor Lim, allow me.
Omnibus?
Omnibus. Uh, number two, proposed resolution number twenty twenty-three dash four six two, returning to barangay council of barangay twenty-nine D City. Shift ordinance number two, twenty twenty-three, covering its supplemental budget number one for COY twenty twenty-three with an estimated income of one million four hundred four thousand three hundred thirty-three pesos and eighty-six centavos. With information that the ordinance, uh, is operative in its entirety. Uh, number three, uh, propose. Resolution number 2023 dash 463. Returning to barangay council of barangay number 38 D City. Its ordinance number one series of 2022. Covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 3,098,000 pesos. 894 pesos. With information that your ordinance is operative in its entirety. Number four proposed resolution number 2023-464. Returning to barangay council of barangay Tuburan D City. Its ordinance number two series of 2023 covering its annual budget for CY 2023 with an estimated income of 3,345,250 pesos. With information that your ordinance is operative in its entirety. May I request Councilor Alam Lim to be recognized.
Counselor Alam Lim you recognize?
Madam Chair belated happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Omnibus approval I move everything is in order I move for the approval of proposed resolution number 2023 dash 461. 2023 dash 462. 2023 dash 463 and 2023 dash 464.
In a second objection I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second objection I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Item number six proposed resolution number 2023-466. Item number ah number five. Ah number five. Number five proposed resolution number 2023-465 endorsing and interposing no objection to the operation of the Move. Movey. Movey la. Motorcycle taxi company. In the city of Kagehan Dioro. Applied for by Mr. Wayne Hacento. General manager subject to the existing laws, rules and regulations pertinent to. May I request Counselor Caliso.
Counselor Romeo Caliso you recognize?
Thank you very much madam Chair. My move for the approval of the said resolution.
In a second objection. Abstain. Waita. Counselor Balaba yes. Question yes and there's a question Counselor Gurli Balaba you recognize?
Good afternoon I'd just like to ask if this is the same as the Angkas Taxi?
It is on similar situation madam Chair. Actually in the Philippines we are lucky to be the one of the cities. Chosen by the D O P R for the. Test, test stage for motorcycle taxi. And there are three companies that were given permit by the national hierarchy. Angkas is one Joyride is the other one and Movey is the third one.
So we only have two.
This is second one the Joyride has not yet applied madam Chair.
Okay rasa imo Counselor Gurli? Yeah okay so Counselor Roger Abadai you recognize?
I'm this is to inquire to to the good chairman of public utility. Whether this operation is it a test or they will now operate as a public utility?
They will operate on a test stage madam Chair that's why there's a limit of 3,000 for the for all the three companies. 1,000, 1,000 maximum for every company here in the city for Movey. Ah for instance they're allowed only a maximum of 1,000 riders madam Chair.
My, my concern madam Chair is that we are already flooded with motorcycles. Maapenay problemas sa bao-bao karoon nga gatubangon sa siyudad if we will allow all these operators. Kagehan Dioro will be experiencing a traffic one problem.
Yes.
This is a challenge indeed of enforcement madam Chair. Because these ones are being permitted by the hierarchy and these are the legally allowed ones. The others just like the bao-bao until now they're illegal madam Chair.
Okay thank you very much Counselor Romeo Caliso yes you're satisfied satisfied Counselor Roger Abadai?
That is true they are authorized by the I U F but they have also to consider the situation of our city. Okay lang sila mga problem to pero we are the end users ah ilang program so. Kisa may mag-sapir it's not the Manila people it is the city of Kagehan Dioro. So I think I hope that testing paman eh so the city of Kagehan Dioro has also the jurisdiction or discretion to allow internet.
So this is a testing stage yes Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas?
Ah this is a pilot project. It's not yet.
A pilot yeah.
It's not yet a regular application for operation. And that this will be subject to styling after the secretary.
Okay.
Nadilit pani siya.
Final.
Final it's only it's only is study part of. Murabag feasibility study paba. Kung pwidi ba of course we can limit the number of motorcycles we have that power. Is it may gadahar kay motorcycle magmalumus tanan na kayo? So.
Okay.
Any objection?
Abstention ah one abstention Counselor Agasuan about the rest are we okay?
Yes.
Abstain Counselor Roger Abadai? And Counselor Ayana Chas am I right okay abstention. So in a second. Objection? None with three abstention motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
In a second objection I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Number six.
Item number six is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 466. Adapting the order of the Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon on BRK's number 2023 dash 08 entitled. Ms. Jonathan Ramonal Imano complainant versus Honorable Ronald M. Seno punong barangay of barangay number 32 respondent. For leasing or renting to unknown individuals the portion of the lot owned by Mrs. Mathilde Vuda de Ramonal. Wife of the late Mr. Justo Ramonal without the consent of the said owner ears. Dismissing the seed case for lack of interest and failure of complainant to comply with the orders of the seed committee. Committee sponsors Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair may I request that Counselor Joey Abu be recognized?
Counselor Joey Abu you recognize?
Good afternoon madam Chair I move for his approval.
In a second objection I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
In a second objection I hear none motion is hereby carried.
Number seven. Item seven is proposed resolution number 2023 dash 467. Adapting the decision of the Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon on BRK's number 2022 dash 09 entitled. Honorable Lee Ilumba Nilias, Honorable Rogelio M. Wanyiwan and Honorable Flordele, Flordeleys Imhava. Complainants versus Honorable Justado Tiwabi, Honorable Diliate Tiwabi and Ms. Lysel Di Kilantang. All of barangay number 31 respondents for alleged ghost activity with unallocated budget. Finding the respondents guilty of dishonesty and misconduct and suspending them for a period of four months. Committee sponsors Committee on Ethics and Blue Ribbon and Committee on Laws and Rules.
Madam Chair before I move for its approval I would like to make a correction that the treasurer. What is the name of the treasurer? Mrs. Kilantang be deleted from this decision considering the fact that he is not an elective official.
Ah okay so delete the. Okay Kilantang. Ms. Kilantang okay.
So this will this decision will refer only to the barangay captain and Kagawad.
Kagawad. Okay.
So move for the approval of its committee report.
In a second. Objection? Objection so Counselor Attorney Joey Abu? Discussion yes please.
Thank you again madam presiding officer let me just make this as brief as possible. In this case madam Chair as a vice chair of the Blue Ribbon Committee. I submitted my dissenting opinion on this case. Considering that I had other findings on the matter and may be allowed to summarize this dissenting opinion. Para pod sa kasayuran sa Uban og hinault pod nga before we adopt this measure. Ah basin og malamdagan pod ang Uban. Ah this case stemmed from a alleged ghost activity of the said barangay. A basketball activity which was sponsored by the said barangay council of barangay 31. Now. This case was filed by the said members of the barangay council and. The committee took cognizance on this case. I dissented or did not agree to the said recommendation of the committee. That this the respondents would be sanctioned for a suspension for four months on the following grounds. Ang mga allegation sa complainants batok sa mga sinumbong kay wala masuportahan maskin isa kaibidensya. Sa mga dokumento nga giattach sa affidavit complaint sa mga complainant. Mao ang mga public documents sama sa vouchers, payrolls, activity designs og Uban pa. Sa ilang allegation. nga anagkanak kuno og ghost activity ang mga sinumbong. Wala kini siya para sa kuwa. Basihan og nagpabilin gehapon nga allegation. It must be noted madam Chair that last year. The good counselor Alam Lim made a special report about this. He prayed that we pass a resolution ordering the city accounting office to conduct an investigation. To which I said it would be properly be referred to the Committee on Blue Ribbon for investigation again. During the committee hearing. The complainants again prayed that the committee will order the city accounting office to conduct an investigation. And to produce documents related to the said transaction to which again. I manifested in the said committee hearing that we cannot do so dilit namun na mabuhat. Kay in that way we will be adusing evidence for the complainants kami nagid hinuon ang mangita og ibidensya para sa complainants. And also I cited nga dapat before they file this case before the committee. They should have attached the necessary documents which they think will support their allegations. And not that the committee will adduce the evidence for them. Gani on the contrary. Ang maong mga dokumento nga kung gipang mention vouchers, payrolls, everything attach in their affidavit complaint which forms part as their evidence. Nakapamatuod naman hinuon yud hinuon nga ang maong activity napahigayon sa maong barangay. Contrary to what they alleged that this activity was a ghost activity. These documents I must put emphasis on this. That these documents are public documents which the complainants did not refute the veracity and authenticity of these documents. Furthermore, these documents were submitted to the commission on audit. Where the said agency also did not find any irregularity. Second. As to the allegation nga wala nagkanak ang nakadak ang maong basketball ang liga sulod sa barangay 31. nga nagpamatuod kuno hinuon na this activity is a ghost activity. Dili gehaponin necessarily tinuod. Walay balaud o isa karul. nga nag-ingon nga bawal ang usak barangay council magkanak og activity outside its jurisdiction sa ilang barangay. Otherwise. I would suggest the to the barangays that we will stop conducting activities sa mga hotel og Uban pang lugar. And conducted their activities inside their barangays. Same holds true nga dapat man gehapon buhaton sa konceho sa barangay 31 ang basket ah pwede man gehapon buhaton sa konceho sa barangay 31. Ang maong basketball ng liga gawas sa ilahang barangay especially nga wala sila cover court sa ilang barangay. Gani the complainants impliedly impliedly admitted that the said activity really transpired. When they alleged in their complaint naasa ilang complaint ilang gi-ingon. nga wala gani gikanak ang basketball nga liga sa ilang barangay pero naasa laing barangay. But pasabot they admitted that this activity really existed. As to the allegation nga dili residente kuno ang participants. I urge everyone to check the records and see for yourselves. Walay maskin isa kabuk tao ang nitistigo og nag-execute affidavit nga dili sila taga barangay 31. Sa ilang allegation nga pagpabilin nga allegation walay ibidensya nga nagsuporta. Therefore it remains to be hearsay although admitted but not given weight in any proceedings even in administrative proceedings. Finally. As to the quantum of evidence in ruling administrative cases. It must be remembered it is substantial evidence yes dilin anakab kailangan yud improve like in a criminal case nga. There is beyond reasonable doubt nga nakasalaan tao kini substantial evidence lang. It must be remembered that the burden of proof. Sa pagpamatuod sa ilang kaso. Is a responsibility of the complainant. Mao dapat ang complainant ang magpamatuod. Kay wala man sila ibidensya nga napresentar na magpamatuod sa ilang sumbong. Mao ang maunang nagrekomendar ko nga i-dismiss ang kaso. And there is also this discussion nga wala sila nagtubag. Again we have lawyers here my co-colleagues in the legal profession and I'm sure they would agree on me. That even if the respondent did not reply or file this answer where in this case they have ilang ibuhat. They have also a position paper. Ibuhatog wala nagbutang og answer. Still the burden of proof is with the complainants. And we must determine and examine the evidences and allegations made by the complainants even without the answers of the respondents. Finally to end. We must remember we the members of the city council aside from our legislative duties must exercise truth and justice and not just by numbers. Let your conscience dictate your own judgment and not the persuasion of some. The faith of the respondent now rests upon our individual and respected hands. Therefore before deciding I urge my colleagues to understand more. Read the records of the case and discern deeply and pray that whatever your decisions will be. It, it is what you think is right and just based on the evidences and not of persuasion of some. Thank you very much madam Chair.
Thank you Counselor Attorney Joey Abu yes Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas?
Ah I was. Impressed by the. Manifestation of Counselor Joey. But. The details of the investigation. Was assigned to the committee. And the committee investigated pursuant to the rules. And we receive evidence. And we follow the rules. And this is now the product of investigation.
Can you please make your voice louder please?
Ah this is now the product the result of the investigation this decision. Supposedly we are not. Supposedly, we are not to discuss before the plenary the details of that investigation, because that is the... that is part of the duty of the committee. Otherwise, we will not anymore create that committee and investigate. Now, Madam Chair, members of this committee, members of the city council, we have furnished you with a decision, a detailed decision. And we have also furnished you with a copy of the dissenting opinion. So, everything here is fair. Members are given the time to discern, read, and interpret what we said in our respective decision and dissenting opinion. And it is now the proper authority of the city council either to adopt that decision or not. It does not go back anymore to the details of... Because there will be no end of this investigation if we will allow that. One thing I can tell you, the members of the city council, that we have given a chance to the respondent to respond and to lay on the table their defense. They give us, they furnished us only a copy of a position paper which is one page in length. So, I'm not supposed to tell you this, but I asked their counsel, their lawyer, Attorney Gunn. Attorney Gunn, you have not submitted your counter affidavits despite the lapse of about three months, and you're only given 15 days. Are you considering this position paper now as your counter affidavit? He said yes. So, we can now proceed rendering our decision, yes? So, I think, Councilor Joey, I'm not saying sciopsia or something, but... I mean, we have to decide, we have to decide. And this is now the product of the decision, the consensus of the members of the majority, members of that committee, that there is a finding of guilt based on evidence. So, Madam Chair, considering the fact that there is an objection, I will request the honorable chair to call for a division of the house.
Okay, so, any more comment? Okay, so, let us divide the house. Okay, Tandy, please. Those who are in favor of the suspension, please raise your right hand. Those who are not in favor of the suspension, please raise your right hand. There is 11 for suspension and 4 for non-suspension. So, motion is approved.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second? Any objection?
Same objection.
Same position? Okay, same votes? Four. 11 against four. Okay?
So...
So, motion is hereby carried.
And subsidiary resolution, Madam Chair, I move for a resolution authorizing the mayor to implement this decision immediately.
Okay, resolution? For the mayor to implement this decision?
Mayor and DILG.
DILG, not the mayor. Either, it's either the mayor or the DILG head.
I think both.
Okay. So, there is this resolution? Any second? Objection? Same objection, same position? Okay. 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 Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second? Same position? Four. Motion is hereby carried.
Number eight. Proposed Resolution Number 2023-468, third.
Item eight, Proposed Resolution Number 2023-468, supporting House Bill Number 7576, entitled, "An Act Providing for Early Voting by Qualified Senior Citizens, Persons with Disabilities, PWDs, Lawyers, and Human Resources for Health in National and Local Elections", filed by Honorable Rofus B. Rodriguez, Second District Congressional Representative of Cagayan de Oro City, authored by Honorable City Vice Mayor Joseline B. Rodriguez.
And all members?
And all members, and sponsored by the Committee on Senior Citizens and Committee on Laws and Rules.
May I request Councilor Caliso to be recognized?
Okay. Councilor Romeo Caliso, you are recognized?
Thank you, Madam Chair. May I move for approval of this resolution?
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item number nine, approving the proposed ordinance Number 2023-269, approving the application of Mr. Rodrigo Ziggo, President Lumbia Octagon Sports Arena, Barangay Lumbia, the city, for a permit to conduct invitational today, five-star derby at the said arena on August 15th and 17th, 2023. May I request Councilor Abadai be recognized?
Councilor Roger Abadai, you are recognized?
Considering that the proposed ordinance is in accordance with by law or ordinance, I move to approve.
Any second? Objection? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Any second? Objection? Fiesta? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Motion to include items 10. And there is a request of Councilor Gurli for the passage of that ordinance in favor of the PWD to be receiving a social pension. But we don't have a copy now, and I told her parang mabasta sa tanan, members of the city council, especially that this is an operation ordinance. And in a gusto masuko si Councilor Gurli.
Okay, now, Councilor?
Mahasia.
Okay, then? Okay, so, next session?
I just signed the... The lawsuit, I just signed the...
So, we'll have the attachment?
For next.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, okay, thank you very much. So, let's proceed.
So, move to approve inclusion, number 10.
Inclusion, inclusion.
Move for inclusion, Madam Chair.
Second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Item 10, third.
Item 10 is Proposed Resolution Number 2023-469, authorizing Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui, representing the city government of Cagayan de Oro, to apply for a survey authority and gratuitous special land use with the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, covering a parcel of land, a portion of Lot 21327, Card 369D, with an area of 60 hectares, more or less, located at situ Nahilaran, Barangay dan Sulihon, the city, aside of the proposed city college campus, certified urgent by Honorable City Mayor Rolando Aui.
This is for our city college, so I request, Madam Chair, that all members should be author.
Okay.
Move for its approval.
Any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve on second and final reading.
Second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
There be no other matters to take up? Motion to adjourn.
Motion adjourned. God bless us all. Happy birthday to me.